Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone and call to order this meeting of the Florisville ISD Board of Trustees for the date of February the 3rd at 6:30?
6:31.
6:31. Read too slow. Let the record show that there is a forum of the board members present, myself, Mr. Steven Shadrock, Mr. Marshall Flear, Mr. Jason Saboda, Ms. Bonner Reed, and Dr. Joel Odom. Furthermore, let the record show that this meeting has been duly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. I will now lead us from prayer, followed by Mr. Saboda, who will lead the pledges. Please do.
Please bow your head. Lord, we ask for your strength and guidance this evening as we work together to support our students, teachers, support staff, and our Florisville community. We want to celebrate the confidence of all students, teachers, and those you bring before us tonight. Lord, we ask that you provide the support and confidence for our students to be successful, both academically and through their extracurricular activities, and know this is only possible through you, through families, and our great teachers and staff. We ask that you remember those families who lost loved ones during the recent air travel incidents and provide the support during their grieving process. We also want to ask for the strength and determination for those who lost family, homes, and all their possessions in the California fires as they rebuild. We ask that our elected officials in Austin recognize the need for additional support for public education system and not only be focused on vouchers and putting hardships on those children and teachers in public education. We pray all this in your name, Lord. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Honoring the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the U.S., one state, one empire, one and individual.
Let me get that over.
Mr. Saboda will now recite our FISD vision and mission statement, please.
The FISD vision and statement is character, knowledge, and confidence. Our mission statement is FISD is committed to the development of innovative lifelong learners who possess character traits to achieve personal and professional success.
Mr. Flear will now recite our FISD goals.
The FISD goals are excellent student outcomes, superior workplace environment, exceptional customer service and community engagement, strategic resource management.
We will now do a round robin of the board recitals of our FISD core beliefs. Our FISD core beliefs are, in FISD, we believe all students feel safe and supported in a developmentally and academically challenging environment.
Families are welcome partners in their children's education.
Faculty and staff are compassionate, dedicated, adaptable individuals who are student-centered.
Campus leadership is fair, equitable, and clearly communicates and engages with stakeholders.
Superintendent and central administration lead with integrity, transparency, and clear communication to provide a well-resourced educational environment.
Trustees provide a student-centered and fiscally responsible leadership and transparent and ethical support of all stakeholders.
An overview of good governance and code of ethics. Each month, we highlight one of our good governance indicators and code of ethics that the FISD Board of Trustees follows to promote the best interests of the district as a whole. This month for the code of ethics we are highlighting equity and attitude. I will be fair, just, and impartial in all my decisions and actions. I will accord others with respect I wish for myself. I will encourage expressions of different opinions and listen with an open mind to others' ideas. Our good governance indicator for this month is the board has a written plan in place for regular review and adoption, reaffirmation of the district's mission, vision, beliefs, and goals.
Great. Thank you. We will now have some recognition for the Florisville FISD students and the teacher of the month. Dr. Gilstrap, can you please say?
Yes, if I could have Dr. Schluter, principal from Florisville South, please come up along with our two students and teacher of the month. Come on up. I'll turn it over to Dr. Schluter.
All right. Good evening, Florisville ISD Board of Trustees, President Shadrock, Superintendent Dr. Gilstrap. I'm honored to introduce to you our Florisville South Elementary students and teacher of the month for February. Here I have Bruce Pettis. This student is an outstanding academic achiever, maintaining an impressive A/B average in his dual-language classes, and has been in the dual-language program since joining FSE. He is a natural leader among his peers. His dedication and enthusiasm shine through in everything he does. As an active member of both choir and art, he brings creativity and joy to our school. He has a fun-loving attitude and never misses an opportunity to greet everyone he sees with a warm smile. He simply makes our school a better place to be by just being in it. And though he is a little heartbroken that this is his last year at South, he is looking forward to middle school and the lasting impact he will make there. Outside of the classroom, his talents extend even further. He's been selected to attend a STEM academy this summer, an achievement that speaks volumes about his hard work and dedication. He also has an impressive imagination, a love for reading and writing jokes, and even has his own YouTube channel with 50 subscribers. Bruce is a lover of jokes. In fact, he has one for you today. Does anyone know what Humpty Dumpty's favorite season is?
Oh.
Oh! Beyond Bruce's achievement, what truly sets him apart is his kindness. He is respectful, honest, and caring. He takes time to connect with others, to listen, and bring smiles wherever he goes, whether it's through a funny joke, a kind word, or simply his presence. He makes a difference in so many lives. His mom shared how proud she is of him, and we all share that same pride. He has come such a long way, and with this recognition today, it's just the beginning of great things to come. He dreams of having his own show and merchandise one day. And Bruce, with your determination, humor, and heart, we have no doubt that you will achieve whatever you set your mind to. Please join me in celebrating Bruce Pettis. Next up, I have Michelle Collingwood. Today, we are recognizing you. You excel academically and also bring positive energy and help bring positive spirit to our school every day. Michelle is an exceptional student, demonstrating a strong work ethic and a true passion for learning. Whether it's math, science, writing, or art, Michelle approaches every subject with curiosity and enthusiasm. Her natural abilities in math make the subject come easily to her, but she doesn't stop there. She's continuously challenging herself to strive for excellence in all areas. Beyond the classroom, Michelle is a talented athlete and dedicated team player. She is a utility player for the Florisville Impact 10U Select softball team and brings versatility and determination to the field. Her love for sports extends even further with volleyball as her absolute favorite, along with basketball and softball. On top of that, she is musically gifted and takes piano lessons and has even explored dance. Truly, there's nothing Michelle can't do. One of the most remarkable things about Michelle is her leadership on our campus. She was recently elected as Student Council Representative for her class, a role that speaks volumes about her character and respect she has earned from her peers. Michelle takes initiative, encourages others, and leads by example, whether in group projects or in everyday interactions. Her kindness shines through in everything she does. She's always thinking of others. Even when she goes to the store, she always gets her big brother something or helps someone else in need. Michelle's future is bright as her personality. She dreams of becoming a doctor or a CEO one day so that she can help people. Michelle, your dedication, your kindness, and leadership inspire those around you every day. We are so proud of you, and we know whatever path you choose, you will continue to make a positive impact on the world. Join me in celebrating, Michelle Collingwood. Next up, we have Ms. Kim Nyde, teacher of the month. It is my absolute pleasure to stand before you and honor an exceptional educator, a mentor, and a true servant leader. Our February teacher of the month is Ms. Nyde. Ms. Nyde's journey as an educator began 28 years ago, and during that time, she has touched countless lives of students and colleagues. She is a proud graduate of Arizona State University, and she holds a bachelor's and master's degree in early childhood education, as well as additional credentials in ESL and educational administration. But beyond the degrees and certifications, what truly defines Ms. Nyde is her unwavering passion for teaching and her deep commitment for serving others. Throughout her career, Ms. Nyde has taught in public and charter schools across multiple grade levels, even at the collegiate level. But regardless of the classroom setting, she has always remained steadfast in her belief that teaching is truly a mission field. She pours her heart into every lesson, knowing that her actions and dedication shapes the lives of students around her. Here at South, Ms. Nyde has found her home. She cherishes the small-town, close-knit community and values and the genuine bond she shares with her fourth-grade team and fellow staff members. Her connection with students is just as profound in her classroom. Her classroom is a place of trust, safety, and joy. She delights in those little lightbulb moments when learning clicks for her students, and she embraces the innocent, often humorous, things they say, sometimes having to stifle the giggle behind her hand. Her students know that she deeply cares for them. They describe her as silly, and they know they are safe when they are in her classroom. They have learned that Ms. Nyde has a particular fondness for proper capitalization, especially when it comes to those baby eyes. You may know them as lowercase eyes. One story that speaks of her nurturing nature comes from a student who was struggling with painfully chapped lips. Ms. Nyde suggested a simple home remedy, and the next day, that student came in beaming with pride, showing off healed lips and relief, just one example of how her care extends beyond the classroom. Ms. Nyde is not only a teacher, she is a lifelong learner, a mentor, and a leader. She spent 13 years as a Girl Scout leader, loves traveling, scouting, and is considering writing a book to share all the things about teaching that nobody will tell you. She understands the emotional depth of the profession and reminds us to hold close to what truly matters, our faith, family, and the joy of teaching. Beyond the classroom, Ms. Nyde and her husband Brian are a proud military family. They've been married almost 26 years on the 26th of March, I think, and have raised three beautiful children, Brandon, Katie, and Joshua. And in fact, Katie is becoming a teacher. Tonight, Ms. Nyde, we celebrate you for your years of service, your passion, and all you bring to our campus, and all that you share with your students and colleagues every single day. You truly do embody what it means to be an educator, and we are incredibly fortunate to have you in our South family. Please join me in celebrating, Ms. Kim Nyde.
All right, Bruce, I love jokes. You can, yeah, I love jokes. Those are the greatest things. Listen, the joy that you bring to the classroom and to your fellow students is just outstanding. And your goals are so high, and I look forward to one day remembering back at this board meeting when we recognized you, that you're gonna have your own show one day. Is that right? You want your own show? Yeah, yeah. Can I get an autograph now? Maybe we can... Listen, I'm so proud of you. You have done a great job, and the joy that you bring to the classroom, the happiness, I love jokes too, and I think it's great. You're living a wonderful life, and we congratulate you. We sure do. Thank you so much. Michelle, as your pastor and as your friend, I am so honored to be able to honor you tonight for student of the month. You are so kind to people. I've seen it at church, I've seen it in many, many ways, how kind you are to people, how you love folks, and how you do well in serving people. And we're so thankful that you are student of the month, knowing that you've got a great career ahead of you. CEO or doctor, wow. Can I come to you if I need? Well, I've got medical help anyway, so... So, I am so proud of you, and you make your pastor proud tonight, as well as these trustees as well. We are so thankful for you and thankful that you're doing well in school. I knew you could do it. And I'll tell you, Coach Martinez, she's got a lot of sports going on. You might wanna be keeping an eye on her at middle school as she gets older, because I think she's gonna help our volleyball team, softball team, basketball team. You're gonna do it all. So, we're looking forward to see you as your future grows, and we're thankful for you. Ms. Nyde, I'll tell you, your passion for teaching is way above many, many others. And I think you've been called to do that. Your calling, and we talked about your mission field, and I believe you've been called by the Lord to do that and to do well. And we are so proud that you're part of our FISD family. The time that you spend with your students, just the investment that you spend with them, right, every day pays great dividends for them for their future. And I'm so thankful to be part of this trustee board, to say, listen, we're so thankful to have you, and listen, for this many years of teaching and the joy that you bring to the classroom, we love you, and we are so appreciative of you being part of our FISD family. And congratulations, teacher of the month. Ms. Nyde. Tell me, the whole ribbed and chopped lips, we'll share that later.
All right, y'all come on up here. I don't know what else to say after all that. Y'all come right on up here.
One, two. I can get just one more. And you want to?
All right, parents, come on up. You are one of them to come on up closer.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Don't mind shaking their hand right there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I love her. Bruce, congratulations. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, now, Mr. Dr. Dick Gilstrap will address the community of the Character Award for FISD.
Board members, community, we do have a recognition for a community character award. However, the employee is not able to be with us this evening, so we're gonna push that off to next month and do that recognition.
We will move on to public comment. Good point. So, any of those that don't want to stay for the rest of the business meeting, y'all are welcome to leave right now if you'd like to. It's your choice.
With the business end.
Mark's waiting for any. That's your question.
All right, now, we'll do public comments. Miss Peachtree, I have the three here, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The board encourages the comments about the districts from members of the public. Anyone who has signed up to speak in advance of the meeting in accordance with our board procedures may do this at the time. The board asks that each participant's comments pertain to the district's business and no longer than two minutes. Remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on the agenda. In addition, the board has adopted policies to provide prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns for employees, students, or their parents, and the general public. Copies of our district policies and procedures on public comment and filing complaints are available at www.fisd.us. At this time, Ms. Sarah Powell, if you'll come up to the podium, please, ma'am. Miss Peachtree, will you help me with the clock, please?
Ready? Yes. Good evening. As you said, my name is Sarah Powell. I'm a resident at Riverbend Golf Course, and I'm following up on an email that I sent with some concerns regarding the bus pickup and drop-off at the golf course near the turnabout. One thing that prompted me to come and speak to you all is that it is a very big safety concern for the students, the parents, and the community that lives there. One event in particular that occurred is parents park on the right and the left at the turnabout to pick up and drop off. Well, they're starting to park right in the center of the road also, and the last incident was they parked right in the center of the road, opened the car doors, the kids ran out. Kids were running across the golf course to meet the bus. It's still dark out at 6:30, 6:45 in the morning. There's not much light, and so I think the parents are starting to block the road to keep the kids safe also, so that the people that are leaving the community stop as well, you know, at that turnaround. And the same thing kind of occurs in the evening when they're dropping off. The kids, there aren't any sidewalks for them to walk on, so sometimes they have to walk across the golf course where people are playing golf, and that can also be a hazard for them. But it is a real safety concern, and I have some videos and I have some pictures that I've taken from the last few incidents that I have witnessed. So, my concern is, like I said, the safety of the kids as they're getting off and loading the buses as well. It's just like a very hazardous situation. And so, I'm asking that you all would consider looking at that and perhaps moving it to a different location where the parents can park in an orderly fashion and the kids can get on and off the buses in a safe manner, because it is really a dangerous situation. And like I said, I do have some videos and some photos that I've taken, some that occurred last week and some that occurred a couple of weeks ago when I first sent my email. I also reached out to the HOA, you know, just to share with them what a dangerous situation that is. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments, ma'am. Thank you very much, Ms. Powell. Next one, Jesse Tuperlenga, please, sir. Thank you, sir. Let me know when I start. Miss Peachtree, you ready? Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Gilstrap, teachers, and parents, community members. My name is Jesse Tuperlenga. I appreciate this opportunity to speak regarding the proposal to the transition to a four-day school week. While I understand the intent behind the plan, I urge the board to make sure they do their homework. Significant negative impacts this change could have on our students, families, and community, the impact on student learning and achievement. Reducing the number of school days could compromise student learning and academic performance, especially for students who need consistency, structure, and additional support. A longer school day may not necessarily translate into improved learning. Fatigue and attention span issues, we know we have those, could diminish the effects of extended class periods. Standardized test scores and overall education outcome, which is our main goal here, that have moved to a four-day week showed mixed or negative results, particularly for students from disadvantaged backgrounds. The burden on the work family. A four-day schedule creates major childcare challenges for working parents who rely on school as a safe, structured environment for their children. Many families struggle to find affordable daycare for the extra weekday, leading to financial strain and disruption in their work schedules, student well-being, and extracurricular activity. Students who depend on school provided meals may lose crucial days of nutrition, support impacting their health and their well-being. Extracurricular activities such as athletics and clubs could face scheduling conflicts with longer school days and lost weekly potential reducing participation with engagement. I did a lot of research on this. As a matter of fact, in Colorado, they've been doing this. 60% of school districts in Colorado have gone to the four-day model. Very little impact on teacher retention, very little impact on recruitment, definitely an impact negatively on student outcome, and that's what we're here for, student outcome. There was a drop. The school districts that remain to five days a week, they see better test scores. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Tuperlenga. Next, Mr. Robert Campbell, please.
Yeah, thanks for letting me speak today, too. I'd like to just remind the board that the public school should be a place for all children to learn and grow, and we are morally obligated to ensure it. If the district makes these calendar changes, many already vulnerable students will be negatively impacted. Florisville ISD is classified as a Title I school by the Texas Education Agency, so we have 55% of students who are classified as coming from low-income families, which is over half. In the same Charles Butt Foundation survey that Dr. Wade used in her report to the board in November, 56% of teachers stated that they worried about their students regularly facing both food insecurity and housing insecurity. What will low-income families do when the district prevents parents from working Monday through Friday, as generations of Texas have been expected to do? It might make it harder for them to put food on the table and have time to do homework with their kids. Think they can realistically afford childcare, or will they be more likely to leave their children at home with inadequate supervision? Myriad peer-reviewed research studies show that kids from low-income families struggle more often with literacy, academic achievement, and college success. These children don't need to be babysat for one-fifth of the academic week, but they need to be educated by highly-trained professionals and given the supplemental supports and services that they need. Furthermore, just this past summer, as a board, you voted to approve drug testing of students in FISD who park on campus or engage in UIL activities. Apparently, you all felt strongly that drugs were an issue in our community and on the FISD campuses. Now, you're saying that you're in support of children being left unsupervised as often as every Friday while their parents have to work. Please reflect on the core beliefs recited at the beginning of the board meeting and ask yourself, will shortening the school week disproportionately impact hard-working folks who are already doing the best they can? And are you willing to turn a blind eye to their struggles and roll the dice on how their families will cope with this change? Thank you.
Appreciate your time, Ms. Kim. Thank you for mentioning that. We will now have a public hearing over the 2023-2024 District Annual Report and Texas Academic Performance Reports. Dr. Wade, can you please come forward to the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Shadrock.
Share information. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Good evening, President Shadrock, Dr. Gilstrap, and board members. Tonight, I will be presenting the 2023-2024 Annual Report as part of our required public hearing. Okay, so, hold the gold cards on me. You have in front of you the actual bound copy of the Annual Report. It looks like this. I'm gonna get through this in 15 minutes or less. Ready to type? All right. The Annual Report is broken up into eight sections as listed on this side. You have the digital copy in your board packet, and you have the hard copy. Please note that there are different years reported, even though this is a 2023-2024 Annual Report. You're gonna see information from the Texas Academic Performance Report, which was released in December, and that is what triggered the need for districts to have an annual public hearing. You'll also see information about our financial data, our accreditation status, campus performance objectives, the report on violent or criminal incidents, student performance in post-secondary education, and progress toward our board-adopted goals. I'm not gonna share all the details, because most of this information has been shared with you in other forms throughout the year. The first part of the report is the TAPER, or the Texas Academic Performance Report, which contains detailed level of student performance, specifics about academic growth, special populations. This report also indicates our accountability rate. However, all schools and districts in Texas did not receive an accountability rating this year due to pending litigation, and distinction designations for campuses were not awarded. So, we have no accountability rating. The most recent one we had was two years ago, and so, there's where we are. However, it does indicate a determination for special education for 2023-24. There are four levels of determination for special education. Needs requirements is the highest level. Then, there's needs assistance, which is what the district is, needs intervention, and needs substantial intervention. So, we're at the second level of four possible levels for determination. We have already submitted our required plan. I did that in December, and we've already, from the beginning of the year, because we have this data, have begun working on strategies to address the needs of our special education students, both academically and behaviorally. Also on this report is an indicator about the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery Test Rating, better known as ASFAB. This is only reported if the district did not offer the ASFAB Career Exploration Program and did not request a waiver. We offer the opportunity for students to take the ASFAB test, so there's no label, so we met the requirement. That was not the... The first part of the report is the TAPER, or the Texas Academic Performance Report, which contains detailed level of student performance, specifics about academic growth, special populations. This report also indicates our accountability rate. However, all schools and districts in Texas did not receive an accountability rating this year due to pending litigation, and distinction designations for campuses were not awarded. So we have no accountability rating. The most recent one we had was two years ago, and so there's where we are. However, it does indicate a determination for special education for 2023-24. There are four levels of determination for a special education. Meets requirements is the highest level. Then there's needs assistance, which is what the district is, needs intervention, and needs substantial intervention. So we're at the second level of four possible levels for determination. We have already submitted our required plan. I did that in December, and we've already, from the beginning of the year, because we have this data, have begun working on strategies to address the needs of our special education students, both academically and behaviorally. Also on this report is an indicator about the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery Test Rating, better known as ASFAB. This is only reported if the district did not offer the ASFAB Career Exploration Program and did not request a waiver. We offer the opportunity for students to take the ASFAB test, so there's no label, so we met the requirement. That was not.
Well, it's yours.
Well, I gave you two minutes. Okay. I will summarize for you a little bit of the academic achievement information in the TAPER because this information is accountability data. In September, Brenda Jones provided an assessment report for you, and at that report, we report the progress of every student who tested in our district. But for accountability purposes, only students who are enrolled with us at the end of October and test with us in the spring count in what we call the accountability subset. So this is the data that you're going to see on the TAPER report, which is a little bit different from what we share in September. So here's a quick summary of the assessment data for all star-tested subjects. The district dipped slightly from 76% approaches to 73%, but it is still close to the state average of 75% as you could see for last year. The approaches level for all reading, language, arts tests, and this is from third grade all the way up to English II, dropped 1% to 74%, which mirrored the same 1% drop in the state level. The board is already aware of the decline in our math scores last year, and I've been reporting our progress and trying to correct that, to close that gap. The district approaches level for all math tests dropped 6% from last year compared to the state decrease of 3%. And while the approaches level for all science tests dropped to 77%, it is still above the state average of 75% right there. And finally, we maintained our average for social studies at 79%, continuing to stay above the state level of 78%. So that's just a summary of some of the academic performance. Also part of the TAPER is information about student participation and assessments. You'll see a difference between those percent tested and what's included in accountability. So increase in both of those, and the difference between those is mobility, like I talked about the accountability subset. Additionally, you'll see attendance, graduation, and dropout rate comparisons since 2021. The data for this year, for this information, I would just want to point out, this is 22-23 data, okay? So up here, it was 23-24, and they have delays in getting data to us, so that's what's there. Any area that's shaded in green indicates improvement from last year. Any area shaded in pink indicates a decline from the previous year. FISD had an increase in attendance to 92.5%, and we had a small decrease in graduation rates of 2.4% to 90.3. This is the same rate, however, as the state level, and it is above the San Antonio region, which is at 88.7. I will also point out, we had a slight increase in our dropout rate of 0.8 up to 2.8%, which is about the same level as San Antonio of 2.7. The next slide provides information about our college career and military readiness, or what we call CCMR. Again, the reporting for this data is the 22-23 school year, so not last year, the year before. The district saw an increase of 4.3% to 61.6%. Students only have to meet one indicator in either a college category, career category, or military category, and I'm going to review some of those indicators with you. Specifically for college graduates, our percent of students identified as college-ready increased slightly, almost a percent to 40.7, or from 40.7% to 41.4%. However, we did see a decline in some of our TSI indicators. I do want to state that TSI previously has been optional, so it just depends on students' take it or not. And we have been talking with the high school. They're going to make that a type of interim assessment for potentially some of our 11th graders, so we have a better population to see really how our students are doing on TSI. Our dual-credit percentage was almost the same as last year at 31.1%. However, we did have an increase in the number of students receiving an associate's degree last year, so that went up almost 1%. The percentage of students identified as career military-ready significantly also decreased, increased, excuse me, from 21.7 to 29.7. And that is primarily due to the increase in our approved industry-based certifications from our CTE programs. The high school has made a concerted effort over the next couple of years, over the last couple of years, on working on IBCs. We did have a decrease in the percentage of special education students who graduated with a completed IP, and that's primarily in our life skills units. I also want to point out that even though the U.S. Armed Forces enlistment has been an indicator, it's not been reported because they couldn't figure out how to get all the data, but apparently the military is now working with us. And so we have 4.5% of our students who get credit from being armed force enlisted. The next part of the TAPER includes information about enrollment, grade levels, ethnicity, and other student and staff demographic information. I do want to point out that while our overall enrollment increased slightly last year to 4,080, our populations in special education and bilingual students also continue to increase to 13.1 and 9.7% respectively, and our economically disadvantaged students had a slight increase to 62.3. But of particular note is the fact that our turnover rate for teachers finally decreased to 18.2%, which is below the state average of 19.1. Last year, we were above the state average, so we're a little concerned about that. So we did come down, not as low as we would like to be, that 15%, but it is in the right direction. Section two of the Annual Report is all about financial standards data. So as you recall, Ms. Engel reported in November about our first financial rating, which we were an A, woo-hoo, and the Annual Report also uses that 22-23 data. And then you also had the information from the audit in October that we had a clean audit with no findings. So their links are included in the report, but I'm not going to go over that because you had a complete audit report from Ms. Engel. Section three pertains to our accreditation status. TA looks at financial data, our data integrity, and results-driven accountability. However, this year, TA has not released an assignment of an accreditation status, so the most recent one we have is from 22-23, which was accredited. I'm assuming that's because of the delay in accountability ratings, but that's what we have. Section four of the Annual Report is the Campus Performance Objectives. So just like I report to the board the status of our district improvement plan, the campuses also have a campus improvement plan aligned to the same goals and objectives, and they evaluate those each quarter, just as we do for the district plan. So I'm just going to give you a quick summary of their progress. So Goal One is excellent student outcomes, and the campuses accomplished 67% of the 67 strategies, with a few strategies being continued next year and two strategies being discontinued. Goal Two is superior workplace environment. The campuses also had objectives for each of these goals, and they accomplished about 60% of them. Although there was progress on all objectives, some strategies were also decided to be continued next year as well. Goal Three is exceptional customer service and community engagement, and the campuses accomplished 55% of those strategies, with the remaining strategies being continued this year. And last, Goal Four is strategic resource management, and the campuses accomplished about 90% of these objectives, and two were decided to be continued this next year. The next section of the report is on violent or criminal incidents. The Texas Education Agency requires the district to publish as part of our report the incidents that meet the criteria for being a violent or criminal incident, and we had one incident that was reported last year. Section Six pertains to student performance during their first year of post-secondary institution. So let me just state that this data is also delayed. This is data on our 2022 students and when they enrolled in college in 2023, okay, that next year. So if you look at, this is what they can gather from four-year, two-year, they've got some they can't find, but of all the students that were reported in our public universities, again, this is public, you know, if they went to a private school, we're not, the TA doesn't collect that data, but of the students that were reported, 75% of our students maintain a C or higher average. We didn't have this data reported to us last year, but the previous year was 71%. So there's been a little bit of improvement of that as well. The next part of the report is progress on our House Bill III goals. So this relates to our early childhood goals on reading and math, and this is not the approaches level I just talked about. This is the meets level, a little higher level of performance. And so you can see we've made progress in both third-grade reading to 38% from 36% and in math, even though overall it went down, the meets level went up 2% to 33%. And as I already indicated, another part of the goal for CCMR for House Bill III, and we've had an increase to 62%, and I'll just tease you that I think this next year will be in the 70s for that percentage, so we're definitely moving in the right direction. The final section of the TAPER report is the glossary to help you understand all the terms that are used in that 200-something-plus-page report. So that concludes the district's annual report. This report will be posted on our website. In addition, there will be paper copies available at central office and all campuses. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have, and since this is a public hearing, I'll be glad to entertain questions from the audience as well.
I know it's a huge report to put together, so thank you, your department, for gathering it all up and presenting it such a concise way. I just have one question. I know, I know, this is what I do, but CCMR, can you talk a little bit more about that and how that's calculated and how that's changed?
Yeah, so the CCMR indicator has changed almost every year in what goes into it. So there's, for example, the industry-based certifications I talked about. This year, they have to be a completer status, no concentrator status, which means they have to have a couple of courses in a line program of study. Next year, they will have to be completers. They have to complete that program of study.
So that's, they have to go four courses?
Four courses.
And?
And take an aligned industry-based certification. So here's an example. I'm in a floral design class. I love that class, but I always took that one class. I passed my industry-based certification, but that's the only class I took. We don't get a point for them, even though they took the industry-based certification. There's, the list of industry-based certifications has changed. I think we're on version three this year, and we'll be on version four next year of the list that's possible. So when you create a moving target, it's very challenging, which is why I'm just showing our progression moving forward.
And then those, the state's constantly looking at those industry-based certifications. What are job trends in the state, as well as what's relevant? You know, there's some of those IBCs that are really almost irrelevant, and now the TDA is saying, now that one's not going to count for it anymore, so.
They're looking at the, which test is, are they equal rigor, equal difficulty? Because one might be really easy. Well, is that fair to say they got that? Well.
And then also just job markets and things like that, about getting students to go in certain directions, wherever the job market trends.
The high school has been, in the last couple of years, trying to make sure that every program of study has an industry-based certification that is aligned, and we're looking at those reports just to make sure we've got the most current to meet our students' needs.
Thank you, Dr. Wade.
Thank you.
We will now continue with our reports and updates with the superintendent report by Dr. Gilstrap.
I'm going to give my report and give Dr. Wade a little bit of a break for just a minute, but board members, community, the flu is here. If you haven't noticed it around the house or around work, but here at school, we have noticed it with a decline in our attendance. It shows particularly at South Elementary. Overall, as a district, our attendance is dropping down to around that 90% mark, which is obviously, you saw from our percentage, 92.5 last year. Our goal this year is 94. So obviously, it's really falling and dipping down and affecting us in big ways, particularly at South amongst the students and the staff. We are working with maintenance to make sure we're cleaning and disinfecting classrooms and common areas to mitigate as much as possible so all kids are gone to recess or gone to lunch. Our custodial staff is in there doing some more disinfecting. We encourage students and staff to stay home. What we always say is, if you're sick, stay home. We don't want you to come up here if you're running fever and getting everybody else sick. However, if you're not sick, we need you to come to school. We need you here so that you can learn and be a part of the learning environment, so. The 89th Texas Legislative Session is off and running to a quick start. Senate Bill Two has already been heard and passed by the Education Committee, which contains educational savings accounts, or ESSs, for families to use to educate students outside of public education. This bill is set for consideration by the full Senate on the floor. I believe it's this Thursday is when they have that on the calendar, and also the governor has put that in as an emergency item, so they could act quicker on that if they need to. The governor also pointed out an emergency item of teacher pay, so we will see a bill coming forth, I'm sure, soon on that. Haven't seen a bill from the House side regarding the educational savings accounts or teacher pay, but I'm sure it'll be coming out in the coming days. Many other priorities were presented by the governor yesterday. This is a long process, and we are just getting started. It'll be interesting. I will say the legislative process is designed to, for bills not to pass, and so there are going to be a lot of hurdles for all the different bills that come out. I believe in the, prior to the session starting, they already had over 2,000 bills filed. Don't know what that number is now, but we'll see how many actually make it through and become law, and how many of those affect public education. I'd like to take an opportunity to introduce Megan Anderson, Officer Anderson. Come step on her, she can see you. There you go. There you go, that's good. Megan Anderson is coming back to us to FISD, and we want to make sure she is welcome. She's going to be working at the high school, I believe, and she rejoins us to be at the high school. We also, chief, I was going to have a police car out front, but we had an issue, but we do have a new police vehicle. That was a grant funded from, was that two or three years ago, chief? Three years ago, we'd been in the process of, we were awarded the grant, but it just took them forever to identify the car, find the car, get the funding secured. We were able to secure that, so we do have a new vehicle in the fleet now, and that makes three vehicles that have been added to the fleet this year, which we will be replacing three that needed to be retired. So thank you, Officer Anderson, for being here and welcome back. Tasby has released Policy Update 124. They released that last week. We're going to be scheduling a policy committee meeting to review any changes to local policies prior to the board considering it for approval in March, so calendar, or excuse me, policy committee members be on the lookout for a meeting later on in February. We're moving forward with the Teacher Incentive Allotment, otherwise known as the TIA process. Region 20 is assisting with the application. We do have meetings scheduled later this month with administrators, teachers. We are moving quickly, but we are on pace to complete our application by April, which is the deadline for us to enter into the Teacher Incentive Allotment. Again, that'll be next year of collecting data. We developed our plan this year, submitted for approval. We collect that the year after, and then teachers would become eligible the year after that, so we look forward to that. We are finalizing agreements with Coastal Band and Alamo College to provide dual-credit opportunities for our high school students. Alamo College will provide a majority of those services, with Coastal Band continuing to work with some of our students who are currently pursuing associate's degrees. If you're near the end of that associate's degree and you try to switch colleges, they will not award you that degree. So we're going to maintain that agreement with Coastal Band for at least the next year during our transition for our kids that are wanting to complete that associate's degree within the next year before graduation. Enrollment and attendance status has been provided for you. Overall, enrollment is currently at 4,028. That is a dip from last month, but what that is, is our early graduates. So all of our seniors that graduated at Christmas, they've been unenrolled now as graduates. And so it takes us to 4,028. Our current overall for the year attendance rate is 93.5, so you can see that there. We do have several things coming up as a board. You can see those listed there. We have district holidays, our student holiday staff PD coming up in February, as well as district holiday coming up on Monday, the 17th. We also have a lot of activities. I was meeting with elementary principals this morning, and my calendar in the evening has gotten really full really fast. So a lot of things going on around the campuses between athletics and our elementary. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Gilstrap. Dr. Wade will present our district improvement formative plan.
Not quite as long a presentation. All right, tonight, I will provide an update on the status of the strategies in our district improvement plan for this school year. Just as the district knows, our district improvement plan is 100% aligned to our strategic plan, whoops, there we go, to our strategic plan. All the goals and performance objectives are the goals and performance objectives in our district improvement plan. So when we're looking at our district improvement So, when we're looking at our district improvement plan, we're actually evaluating the strategic plan. So, goal one, excellent student outcomes. For this goal, there are four objectives and eighteen strategies, and so far, we've accomplished one and made considerable progress on one, and made some progress on the remaining sixteen. For goal one, there are four, excuse me, some highlights for this goal are the safety and security committee meetings have continued. We've had one positive drug testing result from fifty screenings, and each campus is currently working to outline their multi-tiered systems of support for behavior. Training in, sorry, let me back up. Training in January focused on math supports at the high school and the elementary campuses, while the Florisville Middle School focused on training for small group instruction. Our early college high school application has been launched, and the website is now active for next year's ninth graders to apply, and the education planning guides for both middle school and high school have been released. For the first time, I can remember, we differentiated training in January for the district to meet the specific needs of each campus, as I just mentioned, and our monitoring of instruction shows that small group instruction implementation is above our target. We have had a variety of events to support the needs of our emergent bilingual families, including a district Title III event in December and the Talamata, did I say that right? The Talamata at Florisville North Elementary. Okay, I know I'm clicking, there we go. So, these are just a few data points. I'm not going to labor all of them, but we are trying to monitor data every quarter. So first of all, our discipline referrals are down to fifteen, sixteen compared to the same time last year of nineteen eighty-four. So that's about a four hundred-plus decrease. Our student attendance is a little below our target of ninety-four percent, but it's still holding above last year's rate. We've seen an increase in the Meeks level performance for math and reading for grades two through eight when looking at our internal unit assessments. So you'll see two indicators for high school English one and two and algebra ELC, the high school unit assessments, as well as the STAR interim assessment from last fall. So that interim assessment is something that TEA provides to us. It's an online assessment that gives us kind of an indicator of where students are at that point in time. So while the algebra, our internal unit assessments were above the target at sixty-six percent, the interim results were only forty-eight percent. However, the reverse was true for English one and two. Their unit assessments dropped to forty-two, but their interim results were above the target at seventy-one. So basically, what that means is, we need to look at our unit assessments and make sure they're aligned to the standards, and the high school is working on that. Goal two is superior workplace environment, and this goal has three objectives and six strategies, of which we've made considerable progress on two and some progress on the remaining four. Some highlights for this particular goal, including, includes some training sessions that were implemented this year for campus and department secretaries, the differentiated training in January I mentioned, and we received a grant from the Charles Buck Foundation to assist nine teachers in pursuing National Board Certification, and that National Board Certification will qualify them for that TIA money that Dr. Gilstrout was mentioning earlier. We also have a few more organizations in the community that are providing discounts to our staff, and we held a reunification simulation in December to fine-tune that safety and security process. And then finally, for this goal, we have held wear-listening sessions at every campus and provided every campus and department with a calendar information session in December. Here's just one of the data points we look at for goal two is teacher attendance, which was at ninety-three point five this past quarter, which is a little bit below our goal of ninety-six. Goal three is exceptional customer service and community engagement. This goal has three objectives and five strategies, and we've had considerable progress on three and some progress on two. Some highlights for this goal include our FHS students that provide some input into our profile of the learner, which I hope to be able to share here in just a few months, and we have scheduled student focus groups at every campus to gain insight onto their educational experience. The teaching and learning team is continuing to recognize teachers who are implementing best practices and teams who are improving in their professional learning community practice. I've also mentioned the emergent bilingual events that involved our families, and we've held two community calendar meetings. Finally, the high school hosted a college and career fair, which included not only colleges and universities, but also area employers came to provide information to our students. And then the Title III emergent bilingual event in December also included many organizations in our community that showcased resources available to our families. Here's just one of the, two of the data points we look at for goal three. So student attendance has dropped slightly to ninety-three point nine seven, which is, rounded up, that's ninety-four, which is our goal. And our, while our average website and app download went down to twenty-five thousand four twenty, this is mostly due to the fact that in this last quarter, we had three weeks of student holidays, the week of Thanksgiving, and two weeks at Christmas, and so while Ms. Blanca Martinez is posting lots of great content, people are not really engaging when they're out down or on holiday. That should go up. The last goal is strategic resource management. This has four objectives and six strategies. We've made considerable progress on two and some progress on the remaining four. Some of the highlights for this particular goal include the bond capacity was reviewed at our facilities task force meeting, and our teachers have been reviewing instructional materials. Also, the facilities task force concluded their meetings in December and actually made a report to the board in January. Finally, the Texas Education Agency has changed their process for submitting the public education information management system data, which has caused, let's just say, trials and tribulations on the part of school districts. But I believe, and Dr. Gilstrout, correct me if I'm wrong, we're one of eight districts in the San Antonio area that was able to submit our data with no errors. One of eight districts in our area, so kudos to our teams department. And we have submitted our strategic support plan for special education, which I mentioned in TEA, which was accepted. So here's one of the data pieces also that we look at for goal four is the completion rate for maintenance work orders, which was at ninety-nine point seventy-one percent. It was hard to believe they could even improve from ninety-nine point six, but they did. So that includes the second formative review. In April, I'll provide the board with our next review and the summative review later in the summer. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Oops, sorry, sorry, go back. There we go. I'm the clicker happy.
On the career fair, how many, how many people were there?
How many students or vendors?
Students outside?
I'm trying to remember, I put that in the board update. Phew, it was packed, I just remember that. I think sixty-something, I think sixty. That rings a bell for me, because they were double, like in the perimeter in the gym, they were double line, like you had to go between them, so there was two perimeters.
Now, one thing we do is, we allow, and Mr. Barrett may be able to speak to this, we do allow some other districts to come and bring their students as well. So, I think it was Poe, Stockdale, Falls City?
No, Falls City's...
Falls City, so some of the smaller districts, we allow them to come in. Our students come through, and then we open it up to other schools.
But I know HEB was there, some of the military people were there. There was, it was not just colleges and universities. There was trade schools that were there, so opportunities for wherever our kids want to go.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda by Dr. Gilstrout.
Yes, board members, typical consenting agenda with our financials, but we do also have four donations that have been included. The Alamo Area Texas Dare Program has donated nine thousand five hundred and five dollars and forty-four cents to our police department, so Chief will, I'm sure, appreciate that and spend it wisely. Our Florisville Athletic Booster Club is donating twenty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars. They're wanting to update our record boards that are in the stadium on the backside of the press box. A lot of people don't ever see those. We're going to update those and move those into another location where they're a little more prominent. Florisville I S D Education Foundation donated seventy-seven thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-one cents. This is for our educational grants that were awarded back in December by the foundation, and so this is the transaction for us to be able to fund those. And then our Florisville FFA Booster Club donated one thousand two hundred and sixty dollars to support our LVE groups whenever they were traveling for state contests, so that does include four donations. If there's not any questions, administration recommends the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mr. President, I would accept administration.
I second it.
Consent agenda, I'm sorry. Okay, the, there's been a motion by Mr. Savoda and then a second by Ms. Bonner Reed. Is there any other questions or discussions? Okay. All in favor, if you'll please raise your right hand.
Well, either hand.
Either hand, well, right hand, this is a test right by us. That's what we're doing, good, Dr. Gilstrout. Outcome was five to zero.
Thank you, board members.
We will now consider the approval of an order calling a bond election to be held by the Florisville Independent School District, making provisions for conduct of an election and revolving any other matters incident related to such election, by Dr. Gilstrout.
Board members, thank you very much. This is an exciting time for Florisville I S D, it's for our community. I want to go ahead and call up Casey Sledge, if you can come on up with Sledge Engineering, Mr. Matt Lee with Norton Rose and Fulbright, which is our attorney, bond attorney, and as well as Andrew Freeman with Samco Financial Capital. They want to come up to the podium. The district and community began a process three years ago to review our expectations, beginning with culture and working with relationships. Many hours of meetings and listening led to the development of new goals and belief statements for all stakeholders. As a part of that process, a deep dive into goal number four, strategic resource management, which Dr. Wade just got through talking about, led us on the journey to develop our strategic facility plan, which was adopted by the board in August of twenty twenty-two. This plan and the subsequent community task force leads us to the point here this evening. Last month, the board heard from the task force representatives about their recommendations for facility priorities. The board further held a workshop to discuss how we could move forward as a community to address identified priorities. This has not been an easy process, and I want to thank our community members that are here this evening and those that have been a part of this process along the way, our families, our students, our staff, as we take part in this journey together. Individuals are here this evening from Sledge Engineering, Samco, as well as Norton Rose Fulbright, to answer any questions and provide any answers. I just want to say that the proposed election would be a bond to address three critical areas which were identified by the task force. Security, safety, and then maintenance technology needs across the district, construction of a new intermediate campus to address overcrowding capacity concerns at elementary and middle school, and renovations and additions to the CTE space at the high school and middle school, as well as an additional weight room at the middle school. Estimates, which are considered in our INS tax rate, have all been done in a very conservative manner, which these guys may want to try to speak to. I do want to just open it up, first of all, again, to say thank you and how excited we are to be able to have an opportunity to present this. I know this has been a long time coming. We really looked at a couple of different options, and one of, or all of these things will be addressed. This is not everything that the task force came up with. They came up with six items. Some of those were kind of combined into this. Some of these were regarding athletic stadium, which would have to be a separate proposition. In listening to the board during our workshop, it was really coming down to one proposition, which all of these could fit under, and really came down to how much, you know, what can we get done out of all of these things? So we, we have a ninety-five million dollar bond election potentially, or a hundred and five million dollar bond election. Again, several of things are listed there under the descriptions. That is not a complete list. There will be other things that come up, particularly with maintenance and things like that. So, board members, I'll open it up to you for any questions, or we can turn it over to Mr. Sledge if he wants to add anything.
Nothing I'd add, getting you to be here, congratulations on getting this far. I think the process has been fantastic. This is a rather textbook on our side of things, so everything's been well done. If you have any questions about maybe those differences, we'd be happy to talk about that. We'll lay ahead.
So then again, as you've got to present it in ninety-five versus one oh five, we had some, quite a bit of conversation about the CTE building, and we talked about repurposing existing and adding additional square footage for both shop area and the classrooms.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Really, the only difference in these two is that third item, that is the high school CTE. It's just the level of new square footage that would go in, quite a bit more for that second amount, but I do believe both of these project lists would address your high school CTE in a really strong and positive way.
It'll definitely move us where, in the direction we need to go. Obviously, we've already talked about CCMR and how that's changing, and so this gives us an opportunity to really update, upgrade, and I know one of the concerns that was expressed was the welding shop underneath the cafeteria. We would work to remedy that, but I think the big difference between the ten million dollars, you know, what are we not going to get, and really, it's new space versus renovation in addition. I think what we have there, we're having to work with, and I feel very comfortable in that, in that amount. Mr. Freeman, if you had, is there anything you wanted to add about the proposed or potential impact on the tax rate?
Good evening, Andrew Freeman, Samco Capital Markets. The difference between these two options, and we discussed this the last time I was in front of the board, is the difference of a couple of pennies in your INS tax rate. To break it down more into layman's terms, the difference on an annual basis in the property tax increase for a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home is roughly thirty dollars per year between the ninety-five million dollar and one hundred and five million dollar option. So, and again, as you'd already stated, we've used very, what I would consider conservative assumptions relative to our taxable values, the interest rate used for future debt, et cetera, so very comfortable with the impact that's included within either of the order that you may opt to go with for approval this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have relative to the tax impact, but over the course of saving money over the last twenty years by refunding at lower interest rates and having paid off considerable debt, the district has that capacity to borrow up to this hundred and five million dollars through solid financial stewardship on behalf of your board and previous boards before you.
So what would that rate be going to?
Forty-six point two-five cents in the INS tax rate at ninety-five million dollars and roughly forty-seven and a half cents at a hundred and five million dollars.
Does that include, we've got a good, healthy fund balance in our INS account now, does that take into consideration?
That does not take into consideration using the INS fund balance and what Dr. Gilstrout's referring to. You've got the maintenance and operations fund, that's the general fund that the district operates, pays salaries from, pays utility bills, et cetera, and then you've got the interest and sinking fund, and those are tax dollars levied and collected explicitly for the repayment of debt service. As you accumulate fund balance over the course of many years, those funds can only be spent toward paying down debt service. So you can't build up a surplus and then say, we want to move that over to the general fund to give teacher raises, or we want to use that money to go pay for a project outright. It can only be used to pay debt service, and so we can use those dollars, once we've sold the debt, to help pay down the debt and perhaps manage the tax rate lower than what we're setting forth here. Again, this is an effort to be as conservative as possible, but we do have other leverage to pull. One of the reasons, and it's just out of conservatism, we didn't want to include that. We don't know what our taxable values will be come, those preliminary values will come out April thirtieth, and they won't certify until late July, so we want to see how those are trending as well. So, want to maintain that flexibility, but out of conservatism, we will have some, some flexibility there to hopefully bring that tax rate in. Our goal is always to under-promise and over-deliver those results, I'm sure yours is with your constituents as you go out and as the bond is, the bond election is marketed to them.
Again, you looked at historical, what are property values have increased year after year?
Yes, sir.
And so based upon that, you took a very conservative approach.
Correct.
As to what that would be, based upon the factors of either forty-six or forty-seven cents?
Yes, sir.
And you said that's a thirty-dollar difference a year in a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand...
Correct. Yes, sir.
...valuation of a whole.
I know whenever you do projects, for example, an intermediate campus, it's going to take us three years to get to that point, so if we were to call on election, if we were to get that approved, by the time you do the design phase, the bid phase for the project, as well as construction, you're looking at two and a half to three years out. So, that tax impact wouldn't necessarily hit, you know, all at once in twenty twenty-five. It would be potentially spread out.
That, that's correct, and there haven't been any definitive plans, and certainly you all, as the governing body, will have the ultimate say in how much of the bonds are sold and when. in how much of the bonds are sold and when. Um, the plan to this point has not been to go out and sell all ninety-five million or all hundred-and-five million dollars. What Dr. Gilstrap and I have discussed is trying to time the need for funds with that borrowing. Because as soon as you sell bonds, we start accruing or needing to accrue for the interest that'll be due on those bonds. So to the extent we can borrow, let's say, ten million dollars, if that's what's needed over the next year to get through preliminary design and engineering, uh, any other soft and/or hard costs that there may be, uh, we would borrow that much. And then, once those designs are, are, you know, further along, those dollar amounts are needed, known for the project, then we could go through the larger financing. So there's all of that flexibility, and so all of that to say, the tax rate isn't going to go up to that amount necessarily unless there becomes a, a reason to say, let's go ahead and, and borrow the full amount now. But that has not been, and doesn't sound like that's the, the decision we're headed toward in the short term.
So it'll be spread out over the next few years, basically?
Yes, sir.
The increase.
Okay. Well, I, I think the last time we did a bond many years ago, the rate was higher, but then this through time and the increase in property values, I think the district kept lowering that rate because they didn't need all that rate. They just, there was a debt. The home values steadily went up.
And that's the expectation here as well. We've got bonds that are outstanding currently, uh, and those are set to mature, and would, we would otherwise be out of debt, uh, in the next fifteen years or so. So we'll see that rate come down as we continue to grow, as our outstanding debt continues to mature and be paid off. We'll see that forty-seven cent tax rate, uh, decline below that. But again, as you go, it's the, what folks can expect, uh, would be that higher interest or higher tax rate, excuse me, uh, in the short term.
And I believe our last bond election was in two thousand and seven. And at that time, it, it took our INS rate almost to the, the cap of fifty.
That is correct.
And it's currently at twenty-three, so.
And then with this, we're still below the cap?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lee is here, he's our, uh, bond counsel. He has been working on the, the paperwork to make sure we got everything done, uh, right and appropriate and posted, and, uh, everything is in order to make a call. Do you have any other, anything else to add, or does anybody have any questions for him?
Nothing else to add. Again, Matt Lee with the law firm, Norton Rose Fulbright, he serves as the district's bond counsel. We reviewed the projects closely, discussed, you know, what the ballot and the propositions should look like. Um, we're comfortable that all the projects that are being presented could fit within the general proposition, so that's how it's been drafted. So happy to answer any questions regarding the documents, what, you know, the, the voters would see at the ballot box in the event that they, you guys called for the election. And like you said, the last bond election was in two thousand and seven. Uh, the laws changed quite a bit since then, especially in twenty nineteen, so happy to discuss, you know, any of those changes that have occurred. Um, probably the main thing is, at the very end of the ballot, it's gonna include, this is a property tax increase, um, even if y'all were projecting a decrease in your tax rate, it's still statutorily required. So that's just something that we can work with the district on, on how to, you know, educate voters on, on what that means and why that's there.
So I know one of the things that, uh, we discussed at the workshop was, uh, the election itself. We could run the election ourself, however, it's been, how long, Mr. Schröder? At least a decade since we ran our own election, um, or we can partner with the county. Uh, the county does not have elections, but they are running some other elections for other school districts and things. Uh, this order that, that's presented includes the call for the election, as well as delegating authority to the board president and superintendent, is that correct?
That's correct.
To execute the agreement with, uh?
With Wilson County or, or to doing yourselves? Yes, sir.
So we wouldn't have to come back with another action item to, to sign the agreement with the county? This order would give, delegate to board president. Any other questions?
I guess, uh, Mr. Sledge here, the difference in the, the ten million dollars on the, what we can get for the CTE, the difference, like, knock down the Ag building and then what kind of money we can save and what the difference is in our numbers, if you could reiterate that.
Sure. The difference in the, the two ninety-five million versus the hundred-and-five million, you could focus on the high school CTE building. As Dr. Gilstrap pointed out, the intention would be that we would relocate welding and repurpose the current welding space into other CTEs, uh, more appropriate for that location. The different, and in both scenarios, we would have new square footage, uh, that is built thinking where the current big shop is. Uh, the only difference is the amount. Uh, in the ninety-five million dollar, I envision we would keep a lot, or at least a portion of that existing building, and potentially remodel or add-on to all or some of it to get here. The hundred-and-five million dollar version, I anticipate you have the ability, you have the board, to replace the entire building, is a new building. So, all new versus partial new and remodel.
So remodel, renovation in addition?
Renovation in addition, thank you. Think it would appear to be quite a bit different in both scenarios.
And total square footage in the renovation in addition would be approximately?
Uh, it would be about, uh, twelve thousand per foot in the larger version, and, uh, less than that in the smaller version, maybe, maybe several thousand per foot. And by the way, the, the committee and the task force, the task force and the process in your adopted strategic facilities plan indicates a full replacement. That's how we started. So they get, this is just more tightening of the belt, frankly. Uh, I'm not too concerned about the tightening of the belt in this case. I think you can end up with a very, very similar product, just wouldn't all be new. Some would be renovated.
Yeah, the numbers presented, because we talked about it being over three years, obviously, uh, you don't have a crystal ball, so you can't tell what construction costs are going to be like in three years, but do you feel comfortable that, because we don't want to get to down the road and say, well, we got, we got walls on a roof, but we can't do this part now, or whatever.
Yes, we lose a lot of sleep over that. So cost escalation is, is difficult to predict, Texas is a very busy construction market, is anticipated to stay that way. Uh, we do have a considerable conservative cost escalation factor in this, but your projects are not designed. So this is a budget process to come up with these numbers, we've talked about this a lot with the task force. Uh, we do think it's a good educated guess. It's not too conservative, so the number's inflated too much, but it's also, we think, fiscally responsible so that you can deliver on these promises over a three or four or five-year period, if that's what it takes.
I know that the number for the intermediate campus, as the task force went through the process, that number jumped, um, just because, hey, we went back and construction costs keep going up, and so.
It did. From the time we started the strategic facility plan, uh, costs went up quite a bit. And so we did check it against actual central Texas bid, the bid market, actual prices on very, very similar products. Yes, it's going up. It's not getting cheaper.
Board members, any, any other questions? So board members, the administration recommends the board adopt an order calling a bond election, uh, but I'm going to leave it up to whoever makes the motion to designate that amount.
I'd like to make the motion, uh, Mr. President, uh, to designate the amount of ninety-five million dollars to, uh, that particular, uh, plan. And so that's my motion.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion made by Dr. Odom for ninety-five million for the capital improvement of maintenance, technology, repairs, intermediate campus, and additional additions to the CTE and the middle school weight room. Been seconded by Jason Savoda. Any other further questions or discussion?
I know this has been, like Mr. Savoda just said, a long time waiting. I've heard board members talking about, you know, that's exactly what people have talked to me about, that's what people have talked to you all about, and it's the exact same thing that our, uh, our task force came up with. So, I obviously feel comfortable that these are the things, these are truly the priorities. And there, there are some things on there that aren't on there, that some people may think are priorities, but these are the priorities that really represent what the district and community needs right now. Feel good about that.
All right, if there's no further, uh, discussion, all those in favor, please raise any hand. Five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, board members. Uh, if y'all want to just take a quick second to execute those papers, so that these guys have been here a little while, they may be looking to get back. Y'all want to sign those papers? You have the paper?
I'd like to also thank the task force, you guys.
Yes.
I tell you, the community did a great job. Uh, Mr. Books is here and others, but listen, thank you guys for doing a very thorough job. Very, very.
They said there's no progress. I was wondering about that.
All right, board members, uh, if the plan is not here, uh, thank you.
Okay, next we will consider approval of the legislative priorities. Dr. Gilstrap, please hand them.
Uh, yes, board members, the eighty-nine Texas legislature convened back on January the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and is routine practice for public school boards to adopt legislative agendas to guide information on specific issues or needs related to, uh, their communities. The legislative agenda, uh, may guide the discussions between trustees and district staff and elected officials. Uh, that's really what it's there for, to make sure we're focusing on what we, uh, need and not necessarily what we want or don't want. Uh, these priorities, again, focus on the needs of the district. I've provided for you in the board packet, a flyer that shows, uh, kind of what those are, and gives a little explanation, a one flyer, one pager, uh, that you can see, uh, that we'll be presenting to our education committee with the senate and the house, uh, as well as a resolution that we will also pass along to them, and an adjoining letter that we'll send to all of our elected officials, uh, in Austin, and those decision makers in Austin. So, any questions about those legislative priorities? Again, uh, they've really come down to five things. Uh, special education funding, consistent with the Texas commission that was conducted for special education. Uh, number two, provide funding to address challenges of ensuring the safest, uh, learning environment possible, so school safety. Uh, three, increase the mid-sized school allotment. Uh, mid-sized and small districts struggle to be competitive with the larger districts, and so we do have an allotment for that. That allotment has not changed in a number of years in the funding formula, so we want to advocate for that. And then affirming local control, uh, as elected officials and school boards. Uh, this also extends to city councils, um, and county government as well. Local control is really important, we want to make sure we're advocating for that. And then an increase in the basic allotment in the funding formula. We feel like that would be the, the greatest avenue to provide any additional funding, so. If there's not any questions, administration recommends the board approve the twenty-twenty-five legislative priorities as presented.
I'm going to accept administration's recommendation.
I second.
We have a motion to accept the legislative priorities by Mr. Flair, and seconded by Ms. Reed. Any further discussion? Questions? All right. If you can please vote by raising your hand. Five to zero.
Thank you, board members. We'll be passing that on to our elected officials in Austin.
Now we will consider approval of resolution to pay the staff during the district closure due to the inclement weather. Ms. Angell, thank you.
My name is Dr. Shadrak, uh, Dr. Gilstrap and board. Um, this evening we bring to you a resolution to approve paying our staff during our closure a couple weeks ago. Um, inclement weather across the state of Texas resulted in hazardous driving conditions for many residents. These conditions necessitated the district to close all campuses for the safety of our students and staff. In accordance with board policy, DEA local pay during closing and premium pay during disasters. Administration is proposing the approval of the attached resolution, which you should all have a copy of, um, basically stating the reasons we just discussed on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, closing the district. Um, are there any questions? If there are no questions, administration recommends the board approve the resolution regarding employee pay during district closure due to the inclement weather on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, as presented.
Mr. President, I'm going to accept administration's recommendation.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the resolution to pay, to pay the staff during the closure on January twenty-first, twenty-first of twenty twenty-five. It's been seconded by Mr. Flair. All in favor, show a hand. Five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We will now move on and consider the approval of the amended to the district innovation, DOI, also by Dr. Wade.
Good evening again, President Shadrak. Excuse me. FISD currently has a district innovation plan, uh, for the five years, two thousand twenty-two to, uh, two thousand twenty-seven, and we would like to propose two amendments to that plan. According to the Texas Education Agency, we can amend the plan at any time during the, the years of the plan, and it does not change the deadline or the ending date of the plan. So if we were to make an amendment, it would only be effective through the end of the current plan, which is two thousand twenty-seven. The district convened an innovation committee, uh, to review needed innovations, and then the final draft of that, those amendments were presented to our district education improvement committee, uh, just a few weeks ago, who voted unanimously to submit the plan to the board for consideration. The final step in the process is for the board to approve the amendment. If you approve the amendment, all I have to do is notify TEA, and it's done. Uh, the district of innovation plan drafts are included in, in detail in your board packet, and they include two proposed amendments related to teacher contracts. The first one allowing the district to reduce teacher contract days below one-hundred-and-eighty-seven days, and the second one to allow us to issue a probationary contract each year for the first three years, uh, to teachers who have been employed in public education for five of the previous eight. Our current district of innovation allows for two years of probationary contracts, so we're just requesting one more year. Are there any questions about the proposed amendments? If not, administration recommends the board approve the amendments to the twenty-twenty-two, twenty twenty-seven district innovation plan as presented.
Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion to accept administration's recommendation.
Okay. I'll second that. We have a motion by Dr. Odom to take the recommendation for the, to the district of innovation changes, and seconded by Jason Savoda. All in favor, show a hands. Five to zero.
Thank you.
Next, we will consider the approval of the parameters for the twenty-five, twenty-six FISD school calendar continuing by Dr. Wade.
My last agenda item tonight. Uh, as the board is aware, a community survey was launched in December regarding a preference for a school calendar about, uh, interest in a four-day or four-day hybrid, uh, if the district provided childcare on the days the school, uh, was not in session. So the responses to that, uh, were sixty-eight percent in favor, eleven percent maybe, and twenty-one percent no. When researching, uh, what the parameters or what impact would, uh, come to the four-day calendar, we discovered some possible limitations, uh, due to our food service contract. We're currently in year four of a five-year contract. Uh, I naively asked, could we rebid the contract, and was told, uh, no, uh, because of, I don't know, six-hundred-page document, uh, Ms. Angell asked me, and we'd have to get it ready in two weeks, because it was due in December. But we really did not know the details about what limitations. We just know there's some limitations on, uh, with our food service contracts. Uh, I did share those possible limitations with all staff when I did my December calendar tour with all the campuses and the departments, told them I didn't know what the impact would be, but we've got something we're going to have to look into. So I did notify all staff about that. We finally got the details about that implication on January the fourteenth, the morning of the board workshop, uh, when I notified our calendar committee of those details and the board that, um, we would only be able to reduce the number of student days by five without negatively impacting our budget. In addition, we would not be able to provide food service on Fridays that were off until October the first, because we'd have to apply for another feeding, feeding grant? Food service grant, uh, that, uh, is a, a process and doesn't be implemented until the first of October. Uh, therefore, the minimum number of student days for next year cannot exceed a hundred-and-sixty-four. I will state that those limitations would not be, uh, impacting the following year, what would be that, twenty-six, twenty-seven? Because we'll go out for a bid for a new food- Because we'll go out for a bid for a new food service contract during next year, and we can put the student days within that contract so everybody will know what the days are. Does that make sense? So, the board is requested to provide guidance on the maximum number of student days, the maximum number of minutes per day, and the latest end date. I provided in your board packet some possible scenarios that could be adjusted in any combination. Are there any questions?
Again, board members, this would just be the parameters. We would come forward with a detailed calendar for approval in March.
In March. Our calendar committee is scheduled to meet again on Thursday. So as soon as you give me my marching orders, then I'll be drafting calendars, element of PQT.
We've had quite a few revisions, Mr. President.
Any questions? Administration recommends the board approve the development of the 25-26 calendar with daily minutes not to exceed 470 daily minutes with a maximum of 164 student days and the latest end date for students on or before May 29th.
I make a recommendation, we accept the administration's recommendation.
You move that, you accept.
Make a motion? I'm trying to write here, too.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion to accept the recommendation to give the parameters for the 25-26 FISD school calendar as presented by Dr. Wade. It's been motioned by Stephen Shadrack and seconded by Jason Savota. Show of hands. Passes. Five to zero.
Thank you very much.
The board will now convene into executive session. Present to the Texas Department of Commerce, Section 551.074, personnel in 551.072, real property at 8:03. No voting will place, will take place in the closed session. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of the discussion in the closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in the open meeting. At this time at 8:03, we will go into executive session. All right. The board will now reconvene at 8:37 in open session. We will now consider approval of an action item number 78, consider approval of contractor personnel.
Yes, board members. Administration recommends the board approve the contract personnel as discussed in executive session.
I make the motion to accept.
I'm trying to help you see.
Oh, the motion as presented, is that what?
You make the motion?
Thank you.
I'll second. So we have a, we have a motion from Bonner Reed to accept the approval of what was recommended in closed session of the contracts, been seconded by Jason Savota. Any further discussion? Show of hands. Five to zero.
All right, board members, thank you all very much.
At this point, we've now concluded our agenda for the meeting. Through the further business, the meeting is concluded at 8:38.